Mickey.
Well, I think you've got to do that. You know, call the committee to order, roll call.
Counselor Morris?
President.
Counselor Jeffrey?
President.
Mayor Labine?
President.
Counselor Labine?
President.
Counselor Thompson?
President.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Our pledge is we intend to comply with the principles of the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with thirteenth amendment of the Constitution. All right, next up is consent agenda, a discussion.
I have a couple of things I would like best to add if we could, and that would be, I don't know if we want to put spring hydrant flushing or just have the water flushing, and that's with May 15th work session. I would like to see that, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, and then the other one would be...
In the minutes?
Yeah, in the minutes. May 15th, and then it just says water flushing, and I would like spring, you know, spring hydrant flushing. And then the other one was that we had agreed to have overtime was authorized for the bar screen depending on the rain on the weekends for the street department. That was with department head reports. Because they're going to have to go down there and empty that, so it was okay for them to work overtime is what I'm saying. That's all.
I think we did a large light.
We did this in the meeting, she's asking for it to be added to the minutes, that's fine. Were all the three things, Counselor?
Two, it was just two.
Hydrant flushing, overtime, and May 15th work session.
Well, no, the hydrant flushing, spring hydrant flushing is in the May 15th, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
It's in that paragraph you have.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's all.
Those are the additions?
Those two, yes please.
Okay.
And I have, on the claims, I want to pull the claim for Pollard Water. So, there was a hydrant water meter purchased and the gate valve for the hydrant. We did not approve purchasing a water meter for the hydrant. From what I recall, at the meeting, we said we were going to do an on your honor system for anybody that wanted valve water. We did not approve a purchase of a meter, and that was at the May 8th meeting, I believe. This was discussed. The valves, Mayor Labine did say that we needed to have the valves handy just in case, and to get the other ones fixed if possible, so we have spares. But, I'm not in favor of this, and I'd like it returned, if possible. I don't know how anyone else feels about it, but that's my take on it. I believe the discussion was absolutely not, we are not buying it.
Are you pulling this whole bill or are you just calling?
I'm pulling this bill.
Okay.
Well, I guess the gate valve is okay. It's the bill for $1,698.25 that would need to get removed. Do we want to just do a motion on the other part, Colleen?
That's what you were doing, you might want to add this to the agenda, right, as an action item.
Okay. Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with, consent agenda with the corrections in the minutes per Counselor Thompson and removal of claim 1944 for the public utilities.
But then it's going to be a different without pull?
Yeah. And then to update the claims total, when it's all said and done.
Senator?
Any further discussion, all clear? I motion carry.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjust claim 1944 and to allow payment of the gate valve for $644.15, and remove the water meter and return it to Pollard.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Hi.
All clear? Motion carry.
Supported by Mayor Labine.
Okay, next up, other appearances, 7.1, Nick Basaric, is Nick here?
He may be running late because he had to close up the bank, so we can go back to him.
Jody Lopez, please.
You're missing the public forum, because that's where he needs to talk, if he's going to talk.
If he's talking.
Oh, okay. He was talking here.
So, I put some papers together for you guys, and I was asked an approach about potential opportunities for soccer field if he wants. I guess I wasn't sure exactly which property you guys were considering, or if it was something in the near future or in the distant future. I do know that our goal is to have a strong soccer program, and we have definitely been, you know, doubling in our size, we've got over 100 kids this year, just in elementary alone, that are interested in soccer, and currently, after sixth grade, the kids do age on the program. So we've been working very heavily with both Grand Rapids and Hiving to try to give our kids the continued opportunity in soccer. And then attached is also the field requirements as well as the goal requirements for sizes needed for the levelers that will be playing. And as a business point of view, there's like, a lot of people that come, you know, if you run to Bix Power Field on any given Saturday, there's over 500 families that are playing, or 500 players, so that's a lot of, you know, business that can be coming into our small community, so, but I got.
Do you want us to like, set up a soccer field out here at the ball fields?
Anywhere, like, we're really open to whatever, the size guidelines, like, wherever we could have a safe space, because right now, any flat grass, like, is pretty much what our, we have, what, six teams this year, seven teams, and we're kind of using anything we can, we're using baseball fields, we're using, you know, next to the elementary school, and there are hazards to different things, where it's like, at elementary school, wheelers come through and our, you know, preschoolers are out there, and that's not, you know, a safe space for them. So we just want to keep the program alive, we want to keep it where it's sustainable for the future, and we cannot actually host our own home games if the AYSA doesn't come out and approve a field and the dimensions. And that's something where usually the coordinators work in July for spring soccer the next year, so...
You need like, this chalk all the way around, so you have a palm?
Yeah, so if you look at that second page right here, it'll say each specific level, the field that we would specifically be looking at would be that U14 field, because that's the level that our AYSA kids would start, and so you can see the field size would be 110 yards by 65 yards, and it's very specific as far as how it needs to be, you know, drawn out with the lines where the circles need to be and all of that stuff. And we do have really amazing resources with both the Hiving Chism Soccer Club and the Grand Rapids, that they have made it very clear that more than willing to aid us and help us in the right direction.
There?
Yes.
Jody, have you looked at our field on there at the...
Not specifically, no, I just kind of drove by a few times, so...
So, if they played, you've played on the, like, a baseball field too, is that what you're saying?
So, like, I coached U10, and like, so, in Natchwok, at the new addition, we actually just played in green there, so like, the only times our kids actually see soccer lines is for games.
Okay.
When all the games are now, all of our kids have to travel to the Bix fields for all of the games. So it's really, it's a missed opportunity where we could be pulling in home games, because Rapids has also invited us to their fields, you know, where it's like, I feel like it's a growing, you know, I've already had parents asking, we're supposed to be done with soccer in the middle of June, they would like to see a summer league.
Okay.
Well, we need to make sure that we have fields and reps and coaches in order to be able to have that opportunity for them.
So is that something you want to do this year, or are you thinking next year?
I would say for the future.
For sure, okay.
Yeah, I would say like, next year is more like, to throw together this year, like, AYSA, like I said, in July, they would need to come and like, look at any field that we would even say, because ultimately, they have to come and measure it and say it's good for their, you know, association, so...
I mean, I think there'd be plenty of room on that far end on there.
It depends on the width, 110 yards is longer than anything we got from there. Right. So, and then the grid comes, so, the width of it is what I'm worried about.
Probably after your fences.
110 yards by 65 yards.
You might get 65 in there.
Yeah.
But 110 might be placing.
We might have some little fence.
You might, yeah.
They use the old football, the old footballs, they're not going to use that, softball anymore.
But they can do it 25. Baseball this year, for the little kids this year, they've got that set up already for...
Mayor Labine? Mayor Labine?
Yes.
Mr. Labine should be at the podium if he's going to be speaking, not from his chair. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't mind this going up at the baseball.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I don't know how far it is.
We have to try to make this work on the big field, because that's one field that's not being used.
Or you might be able to make it from the fence of the little field, but then you've got that skate park there.
Yeah, I don't think you got a room there, yeah, I think you got to do that, like, field, we have to go on there and measure and see if they're...
Well, how about if...
Anyway you look at it.
Mayor, how about if Jody contacts the people that have to come out and measure, and they can determine what sizes and where they can be placed?
It'd be fun.
And then, so, and what, do you want them to measure up there, that, do you want them to look at, could you be a little more specific for me, for where I need to direct them?
I think the whole field, whatever is going to work.
Except for the little field.
Yeah, if they can work around...
With the shorter fence, the field with the shorter fence, they could, little league on there and stuff like that.
If they can go around that, or eliminate that area and see what they can come up with, if necessary, you know, maybe we'd have to take those fences down, I don't know, but that's something we can look at and discuss after you talk to whoever you need to, and I think it'd be great. And there is a concession stand?
Yeah.
Too, so...
That would be great.
A lot of the ball fields have dual fields that are used for baseball and soccer, so they're marked out that way. Having the poor boys, I run around all over the place, I see different fields, I would concur that have them going measure, look at what you need, and then we can decide logistics, because right now, the fields are not being used, like, and, you know, as Mr. Labine stated, they're going to come, but it would be nice for them to actually be used more regularly, because that's what we wanted, is the field to have purpose, it's just sitting there right now, rotting, pretty much.
Right, yep.
And I'm not in favor of it continuing to sit like that for five games a summer of potential baseball. So, it's just a thought, but there is the dual part, so we actually wouldn't have to lose anything, you can make it work with both.
Yeah, great, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate your work, thank you.
Nick, would you like to come up, this is Nick, is it Basaric or Bassaric?
Yeah, I'm in here.
Okay, he's the new manager at Blaze Credit Union, we just wanted to introduce you to our following.
Well, thank you, yeah, I'm Nick Bassaric, twenty year, born and raised, Hiving, Minnesota, I moved to really Minnesota for a little bit, had the dream of managing a resort, started to have a young family, decided, high insurance, got into baking, I was with Wells Fargo for thirteen years, eleven years as a branch manager, ten, eight years over here in Grand Rapids, short stint as a drug tester, and then I wanted to get back into baking, so, I'm here at the Blaze Credit Union.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you guys need, have questions on, please come onto us, we want to be really involved with the community and do more. I wish there was a way we could get a Blaze sign somewhere, but from Grand Rapids to Hiving, there's not many signs that are available for... for, you know, billboards and stuff like that. So I don't know how, you know, we go about getting our word out there more than being involved with the community. I think we're involved with parade, golf events, things like that. But if there's more that we can be involved with, where I can get our name out there more and more, I greatly appreciate hearing about it, so.
Here you go.
Would you like to help me for a spot for that sign?
That'd be awesome, you know, like even driving into town, it's like, how do you know what's here in town? Even with the bars in town, Legion in town, Legion sells food now. It's, how do we know what's in town? One of my favorite places to go as I travel and drive is to stop at a VFW or Legion to eat because I know where the money goes and where it's for and usually the food's the best. I don't even know, I didn't know that was in town. I used to, Luca Adam was my best friend. I knew the Legion was here, but I didn't know they served food in what I heard just recently. So it's a great idea to try to, you know, even try the business for the heavens to get something put up that says, these are the places in town.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think if we contact the state, they can do those directional signs like they have, I think by Nashwauk, there's some that list the businesses. And they set those up for you, but it's a state thing, so we'd have to contact them. And I don't think it's very expensive, it was like $500 or something.
No, and I think the city has to be on board with it.
Yes. We have to fill out the application and then list the businesses that wanna be on it or, yeah.
Sarah Carlin was also doing something along that line with her project that she started years ago, so she would be good to connect with too just to see where she's left off. Because she talked about signage for Kiwatin.
On the highway?
Like even just letting people know where mine was and where yours was. It was like a big thing.
Okay.
I can't recall the details, but she was working on that, so.
Okay, Mayor Labine, she's coming here on Friday, so I'll bring that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks, nice to meet you.
All right, other appearances, Ellie Lenke, our engineering engineer on capital improvement plan.
All right, I'll actually begin with the status update email. Did anyone have any questions on that? No? No problem. I understand we were able to get that quick turnaround deadline for the soccer application, so thank you guys for your attentiveness to all that. Otherwise, the only other item that I have is the agreement for professional services with capital improvement plan. This is really to kind of gather information and plan on this project. It's the first step to this project is really understanding what we wanna do and how we wanna do it and what it's gonna cost. So maybe you can kind of see the scope of life and the assumptions that are scheduled and cost. So, do you guys have any questions?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah.
So this is for like the total street project that, with the grants that we're applying for?
Yes, I believe there's a map of that showing.
The road center?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And is that, what, you're looking at 8.5 million for the whole project? Is that kind of a ballpark?
That's a ballpark based on what we've seen kind of per block cost of construction. So this would give us a lot better number and where the numbers are coming from.
Okay. Okay.
This contract you need signed by the mayor to proceed with the next step?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with SEH for the Street Utilities CIP in the amount of $9,700.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Okay, unfinished business. First up, the A1 to adopt the resolution approving professional service agreement with Wayne Labine, class B wastewater treatment plant operator to direct and decommission and implement the required training for the city employees. Tanya would, will you take that?
Sure.
Me and Pam have.
Colleen, do we need a motion to have Tanya take this? The mayor's seat?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for Tanya to take the mayor's seat for 8.5 million.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so I'll step up and have some questions here.
I think you've had enough discussion on this. We had discussion at the last meeting that I wasn't at, the last council meeting, and we had a workshop on this. We need more discussion?
You guys didn't leave for us to have discussion, did you? No, I don't think you need to leave, you just can't take action.
We can't take action.
That's the minimum practice that we've been doing.
Oh, you have?
If you prefer to do that, we can typically. People say that we don't take part in the discussion.
Do you understand?
Can, was there new information that you gave us today regarding this? Regarding the licensure, which is farther down on your agenda for the adopt the resolution for approving the professional service agreement? We have that contract in here. Decommissioning of the plant and then attached to your amended agenda on the back page is our answer from the state on the systems collection operator and what is required for the city. So if you notice on there, she responded back in email. She highlighted what the city needs, which is CD collections operator. We do not have anybody that can take the test for the qualifications that are needed. We had discussion previously that our street supervisor would be able to do that, but he does not qualify to take the test. So we don't have anybody. That being said, are they, they're staying or they're, I missed that half of them.
Yeah, I just, just in our normal practice in other councils I believe we're having to leave, but if that's the Kiwatin practice and you guys wanna follow that, you may. They're just not allowed to take part in the vote.
Okay. Are you voting or are you discussing? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I think they're free to sit in and listen to the discussion. You've identified the conflict of interest or needs identified and that's not. It's up to you, you know, it gets up to the council, I'll stretch on that. So there's discussion?
Well, I'm just not understanding, which hasn't been brought up before. And we were gonna have a meeting and talk to Wayne directly when I was out in California, which I did not participate in the meeting. And what we wanted to talk, but then you had stepped away. So now you're back in and I don't know who directed you to call you and come back in. I'm not really sure what's going on. But we've never gotten, what I was gonna question on is what is the plan? And I don't know what permits have been applied, has Benchmark done it? I don't know if this new engineering company has done it, has the city done it? I don't know where we're at with it and how much we've done. That's what my question is.
I don't know either. I'm coming into it right now too. I don't know what people service get to work for them anymore. So I don't know what they applied for a permit, I kinda doubt it. The main thing is getting the decommissioning done and it starts.
But we have to have a thing from, I understood that we have to have something that is submitted to the state, letting them know that we're closing it down and that we're gonna start this decommission process. So has it been done? I don't know.
I don't think it's been to that point. You still have a lot of work to do on there before you're really gonna decommission it. You've got 170,000 gallons of sludge in that thing. That's not just gonna sit there, they're not gonna bury it.
So that's putting that out in the drawing, that's right?
They're not gonna dry it, it'll even come out.
Pardon me?
If it'll even come out, it's been in there so long, you know, and then have to do work and get an auditor. Hopefully that monster bullet, you might end up having to get money from the IRRV to close that place. I don't, I don't know if it's.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to find out. These are discussions that I don't recall having and that's where I'm confused. I wish that I had more information. Because at the last meeting too, I was also told that the abatements or something else has been done. Does anyone else, do you two recall hearing that? That something's been done with the state?
So, Councilor Maris, we have, Peoples did set us up to decommission the plant and I have did the reporting necessary through June that the state required, that it shows that it's not an active plant anymore, that we're in the process, they've given us the leeway. I've been dealing with Mr. Le- L-E-K-S-E-L-L. As, so as far as the permitting, we're fine with our permit that we have right now. You are correct that we haven't started the process of decommissioning and when that starts, they wanna know that. But I need a licensed person to report that because we no longer have people services.
I believe there was discussion with Benchmark, when Benchmark was with us, that Benchmark was doing all of the communication between the MCA and the state and whatnot that they needed to. And then we were to where we could go and now it's just setting a plan up to go further and put somebody in place that can manage it or do it and start applying for the permitting then, if I'm.
You are correct. Yep. And if you also recall Benchmark did the legwork for the abatements.
Yeah.
He did all that and he was happy about that because we wouldn't incur those costs now.
Right.
Okay?
That's mine.
Did that answer Councilor Thompson's question?
Well, and I think just with it, so it's been, I mean, and like you said, you don't help when you're coming into this as potentially providing support. It's been kind of, at the end of the day, you're managing that stuff in the office, but it's, the conversation has been so much all over the place that I have had a hard time following. If we're talking about the new plant, the old plant, like I, you know, so I've looked at mine too. Yeah, and I, you know, for me, where I'm at right now, and I'm just thinking about Kiwatin as a whole, like we're dealing with a sewer plant. People can get sick, they can get, like you have to do it correctly. And so I think what I would feel comfortable with is if we could put all of that stuff back together and say, hey, this is where we're at. You know, I'm in favor of all hands on deck. I don't think at this point in time, we're in a position where we can just be like, oh, not that big of a deal, you know? As you said before, I mean, you hold a license, you're the only one in, in what's the radius?
Well, that's like a good time.
Yeah, but anyway, it's not like there's hundreds of people with this license. So there's that part of it too and we have discussed it. I think that more clarity will come with time. But the reality is, is that we have to start the process. And I was hopeful that, and I wanna jump to the next topic out of order, but I was hopeful that a city employee would also be able to get the license to make it that much more efficient, I guess you could say. That's was my hope, you know? And I know, and I don't wanna carry this out too far, but I'm assuming that this will kind of come organically as far as what your training is gonna look like for the employees. Because I know you had said before, you'll work with supervisor subquist, figure that out with the employees, when they can do it, they can do it. I'm assuming that's still consistent, right? So it's like, you're available. They gotta get hours, you're gonna do the hours. So, I mean, that's, that's my takeaway from that at the time.
And once they get trained and, you know, they don't really need me looking down their neck, you know?
Yeah.
You gotta get a hang of the job.
And I did. And it was, it was 100 hours or something along those lines?
I'm not.
It's on that.
Okay, so these were, so these were accurate?
Yes.
I didn't see the, I think I did the math and I came up a little over 100 or something, I think, right?
It's 100 hours?
Oh, this, oh, 40 hours, 40 hours. I'm looking at the previous in the license application.
It is a year.
So, okay.
One year.
Is it $100 or a full year?
A 40 hour, 40 hours, a minimum of 40 hours per month or 12 months under, I mean, and those are the logistics that took it figured out. It's actually more than just like five, you know, it's kind of a lot of time and it's also be committed for that. You know, so. Those are the questions that I have. So I'm hoping for more clarity in the future as far as where things are going. And the other discussion? It's in, it's in that area.
It's on the back of your next page, there you go.
This one? What are you talking about, this one? Today? Oh, you didn't get it?
Yes, she got it, it's right there. Isn't it on the back of her packet?
No. Doesn't it? I gave him mine.
So I'm not understanding either with the one year of operation experiences then on that. Because I had saw something with this. I guess that's more clarification that I want. And because it's not, I know you haven't, I don't remember when you left, but whatever. You haven't been down there since the new plant started up and that little bit of time before that.
Yeah.
And so I know that you would be helpful to us. I get that part, you know, moving forward right now and helping with experience, but when I look at the application, which doesn't have anything to do with you, I'm not getting the same information. I'm not understanding it with experience and hours.
You can fill out your application, this is how it was with me. I don't know if it is anymore. When I go down there, I have to say how many years I worked, who I worked under.
Right. It's still asking that way.
Yeah. So that's what you gotta have, you gotta have your battle.
And that's what, yeah, we'd have to talk to Eric about that and what he's done down there, but that doesn't have anything to do with you, yeah. That's something else.
Councilor Maris?
Yeah.
If you look on the email, which I had her spell out, the requirements needed for what the city of Kiwatin needs, you need an SD license. If you look at the highlighted part, Susan, Eric doesn't qualify because he hasn't worked under a licensed person, one. Number two, it's also not in his job description. That's the other thing highlighted there. So she spelled it out really good on how many hours you need and what the requirements are. And this was Tracy Finch, the first time that I talked to Tracy Finch, that's what I understood and then I, the last meeting, you had talked to her and got information and then I.
Yeah, because I had known that Wayne was back.
So then I circled back with her again to find out exactly what the qualifications would be needed.
So when he worked with people service, that would come?
Not if people service.
With Carol, working directly under her.
With Carol?
Oh, yeah, you'd have to be an employee of people service probably to have to go.
Okay, that isn't, yeah.
So, Councilor Maris, I think we're getting off track here.
We're on a different.
We got off track, so we need to stay on there and we're back to that further down on your agenda.
So, do we have a motion, enter a motion to adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement with Wayne Labine for class B wastewater treatment plant operator to direct and decommissioning, implementing required training for city employees. And I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll support it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Motion carries.
Councilor, Councilor Maris? Volcal, Councilor Maris?
Yes.
Council of Judiciary?
Yes.
Mayor Labine? Mayor Levine?
Abstain.
And Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Yes. Motion. Counselor Maris, the contract is in the packet, and I just did the resolution for the, for the hiring of him. Do I need another motion to sign the contract, or not?
I'm gonna do a second one, because you've adopted within the contract, he's specific, so.
Okay.
There's a, for discussion, we need to get close with that as well.
That's the, yeah.
So you need a motion to, for me to sign, and I have to, am I gonna have to sign?
No.
May I go ahead and sign?
Okay.
Right, he's to be directed by the council. So you're just needing a motion for Mayor Levine to sign the contract?
Hmm.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye, unopposed? Motion carried.
Abstain.
Okay.
Volcal.
Counselor Maris?
Yeah.
Counselor Givory?
Yes.
Mayor Levine? Counselor Levine?
Abstain.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
He knows about you.
Eight point two, discuss, under unfinished business, discuss proposed Eastern I task a joint sewer board bylaws.
Thank you, Joe Miller, I haven't, I can, I've talked to Brian about this, um, I don't know if you're aware, he attended, um, East I task a joint sewer board meeting this past Monday. I know you, some members of the council had attended the prior meeting, um, and I believe it's come to the attention that there's a need for these bylaws, because there's confusion about how decisions are being made, and that Kiwatin, yeah, is being properly represented by the, by the contract. So, um, I believe these are preliminary set of bylaws that Andy Borland sent over. Brian added some things to them after the meeting on Monday. So, he said maybe you wanna just table this discussion, and he should have more, even more detail with another round of bylaws for the next meeting. Um, hopefully, um, but they're moving in that direction, trying to get everything kind of tight, tightened down, and so that the persons were all involved under that agreement.
Is it possible to get a red line?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I can ask for that, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, yeah, cause it's hard to look at.
Right, exactly.
Counselor Mead, um, PJ, you have, you have to chat, you should be taking. Brian is at the, the TM side.
Yeah.
So, what we need to do in that time, I don't know.
Can at least provide whatever we thought for the next meeting, you know?
Yeah, we can get those ready for our next meeting, which is the third Tuesday of June. Cause that's gonna be our next Eastern East Sewer Board meeting.
It's the third Tuesday of June?
And we can have some of the business, I think that's the council meeting, but we need to get back to that board meeting. Some of the stuff we had to table with Cal, sorry, was it, uh, a lady?
And I wanted to try and use that end of June, I think the Tuesday will be there, but if not, I'll talk to the board.
Do I need a table? Do I need a table?
That would be the, the Tuesday.
Table making.
Yeah.
Hope we get more information.
And then we can provide whatever additional information with the red line for the next council meeting.
Next.
Yes.
So, the twelfth that you're saying, in June, June twelve?
Yeah, the next, uh, the one, the, um, East I task a joint sewer board meeting is the third Tuesday, but the next meeting will be the twelfth.
Yeah, the next Tuesday, twelve. Okay, I'll make a motion to table this discussion for the bylaws for the East I task a joint sewer board until June twelfth.
Seven.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, eight point two, adopt resolution for bulk water purchased from the City of Kiwan. Justice, you have.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the revised, uh, bulk water purchase resolution?
Mayor Levine, may I speak please?
Yes.
All right, um, I'm really not in favor of the truck fill, because I don't know how you would do the two hundred dollar fill, not knowing what size bulk trucks are coming in. To me, I would rather stay with per gallon. Um, and I would like to see it at one cent. And then that would cover all of our costs, I would assume. Um, I know we had talked about the, um, honor system. I don't know how, you know, that's really hard, we don't know. You wanna be able to trust people, but can we, I don't know. You know, the only way you're gonna know what's going on is, um, as you know, Mickey, when you go and have the well read every morning, depending on how much, and you would have to keep track of it, you could kind of watch it there, but you're still not gonna know when there's flushing going on, and trucks are being filled, bulk trucks are being filled, um. Yeah, I don't, I'm just, I know we have to have a price on it, but I don't know if we would like to have some more information given to us, or?
Can I just ask, just in theory, quickly, what's the size of a typical, per gallons are we talking about, for a truck? How big are they?
I'd say they can range from five to a thousand, at least.
They're gonna be some of all different ones.
Different sizes.
Well, and I'm just asking, cause this one is fifty doll, on this DNR notice, it's fifty dollars per million gallons.
Well, those, that's what we're looking at, and you can see that it isn't much.
That's our city.
I, I realize that, so, I'm just saying like how low it really is, realistically, I understand that's not the same. Um, so, I guess, I mean, I don't own up with all this water stuff, but I mean, I think we need to obviously recoup our, our money. I'm just curious about how much water.
And we don't wanna push them away, I don't feel we, we wanna get, cause it's a nice profit for the water department, is how I look at it. I don't know if the bill has ever been sent out to Michaels, what kind of revenue we got on that. You know, the invoice, or, I, I don't really know what went on with that, and that might be helpful. Did, have they paid yet, or is it done?
Not yet, nope.
No, okay.
Michaels is a little bit different situation there, in which, um, Michaels is paying per water, for the water. And then they're also paying for the wages for the overtime and all that includes that, so that's what's been taking, um, longer for the public utilities clerk. But I can say that this, um, mayor can-
TJ under drawn, they're, they're getting it for basically, uh, a pump union, as they're running their auger under the draw, they use water. Uh, they've really doing a nice job, they put the time down, they know exactly how many gallons they're, they're pumping. They have a meter, I guess, and, uh, all nicely put together.
Documented, yeah.
So what is it on there then, that comment that they're pumping, for example?
We got it there, it's two pages, it's when they come, they put the time down, how many gallons they're pumping.
Which is nice up there.
Yeah, and that's how they should all do it, you know, if you give them the forms.
So.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, on that sheet, is it, um, they have every day, so is that like, if they go down there ten times, it's all listed on the one day? So how, I mean, obviously, this is the first time that this has come up, so it's not like it's a common thing where people are coming here to get water.
Not often, no.
No, it doesn't happen.
But it's a good thing, you know?
But if you look at the price of the valve, it's six hundred dollars.
Right.
So, three trucks, if they go there three times, that at least pays for the valve.
Yeah.
Some people are gonna use it more than three times, some people might use it one time. Um, I guess we could probably deviate on that per gallon price, if we kept it at the penny. So if you have a four thousand gallon truck, at a cent, you're paying forty bucks, and at a five cents, you're paying two hundred, so. I mean, we could leave it at the penny and just charge the two hundred connection when they use it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support, I mean, I'm really-
I like the connection fee, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, so that's what that would be, basically, would be, I mean, you could rephrase that, instead of say trunk, truck tank fill fee, you can say connection fee, okay? So that's what it connects to the hydrant, would be two hundred.
How many times do you pay the connection fee, just one time?
Just once.
Per day, or?
Per, I would say per day, wouldn't you, or?
No.
Sometimes it, and that's where I think it starts to get off.
Well, that's what I'm confused on, how many times they go.
I would say one time.
Okay, a one time.
You know?
Yeah, I wouldn't say per time, if it was once a day. I don't know, I guess it doesn't matter, whatever you guys think.
I, I wouldn't charge them, I'd charge them one time to hook up.
What if you did it up to?
If you have to take-
A hundred thousand gallons?
If they quit to-
A connection fee.
You know, if they quit using it for a period of time, and they come back and wanna hook up again, then you charge them again.
Yeah.
But you only charge them one time if they continue to use that and fill it up.
On a daily basis. I'm a bit with that.
You know?
Okay.
Otherwise, they'll go elsewhere to get water, you know?
And I don't really wanna do that either, I wanna-
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
When I did the research at Clerks Academy, um, the reason why the two hundred dollar truck tank fee is because a hydrant costs how much? Yeah, tell me, six thousand dollars?
That was what I'm saying, I realized that it's like five hundred.
So that's what they're using to go into that for future hydrant. And every time they hook up onto your hydrant, you're at risk that something's wrong with your hydrant.
That's why you need to order the valves.
Yeah.
You only open a hydrant one time. Put the valve on, and then you can open the valve with your hand like this, and you're not doing anything to the hydrant. So, I think the two hundred is, is a good price, uh, we might wanna make it two hundred a month. So if they're still on there, let's say they use it all in May, and you come back and they're still using it in June, maybe you hit them again for two hundred.
Okay.
I don't think that's out of line, especially if you see how many gallons they're pumping out of there every day. About that.
Mm-hmm.
And then one cent.
Or one cent on the, you know?
Did you wanna change the name of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what-
What was it?
Yeah, so, um, connection fee, so a two hundred dollar per month connection fee, and a one cent per gallon water fee.
Thank you.
But is it one cent?
So I'll make a motion to approve that, resolution with those changes.
I support.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, good job on that one. All right, under eight point three, unfinished business, discuss decommission of the wastewater treatment plant. Ken already won two of them. You wanna come up and say anything on Wayne?
I guess I got a few things. So there's an email in our packet from last year, from Paul Christensen. Um, I'm not in favor of having them come and pump again, because obviously, that's a hundred dollars an hour. Not exceeding thirty a week, well, that's three grand a week. So you're talking twelve grand a month, I'm not in favor of them coming back here to do this. They're not under contract with us right now, um. I think SEH has some background in decommissioning, according to your little-
Yeah, it would certainly be available to help with all permitting regulations.
So I think maybe, you know, with the city employees and Wayne helping, and getting the pumping done, because they haven't gone back there, they cleaned out the beds, but they haven't been back to pump. So, we gotta get that done, and the beds, the waste that came out of the beds needs to get taken care of, so that's gotta get to a site. Um, so I think with FCH working with Wayne and Eric and everybody, they can come up with their, a plan. I mean, there is some stuff here, you know, that, uh, Paul Christensen had wrote down, but I think, um, we also have what Alan wrote on this, um, when he was working from Benchmark, so I think we should be covered with, we just need to start.
I think we need to start, I'll be honest with you, I was, um, this is me acknowledging that I didn't write the date on the email. I thought that this was current, so I was wondering further what we were doing. Um, so now I'm glad to see that it was from us, yeah, here. Very good, thanks for remembering that.
Thank you.
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
So People Service did call and ask what our plan is, I need to respond back to him.
We're gonna move forward on our own, I think, see.
So do I need a directive to, to approve me calling People Services and letting them?
Wayne, is there any reason we're gonna need Peoples for anything?
Not that I can say they're law and hand, unless they've got something even worse, other than that, I don't think.
I don't think they do.
He's waiting to hear from us.
He's waiting to hear.
Would they charge, charge us with pump?
I know. Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion to notify People Service at this time, um, we don't need their services for decommissioning.
I'll second that. Let me figure which motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Unfinished business, eight point four, update email from Alan Johnson, Benchmark engineer on punchless wastewater treatment plant.
Mayor Levine, the email's in your packet, and then I did talk with him just like at three o'clock today, and he hasn't heard anything more. Um, USA is waiting for a new lid, something was cracked.
Uh, a handle for the lid.
Okay. And?
Which is a very small item, get the handle, how big is this panel? I mean, I can't understand why the cap is not a good rest of stuff, so we can get that, but, let's see if she's used.
And I have requested Alan to come to our next regular council meeting.
We'll have to decide somewhere along the line if we're gonna, uh, try to settle with someone for a little court. So something we'll have to deal with, you know, I'd like to get moving on that, gonna make multiple. This has been going on quite a while.
That one you're telling.
Okay, next meeting. Okay, eight point five, this is something that Credit Union's been after me about, Mr. McCann. Uh, discuss the Spider Credit Union building. They want, they wanted to see on the building. And, I mean, and I'll give our opinions, I guess, my opinion is, I would, I, I would accept, I would accept the building. That's, I think the building's in fair enough shape, that, uh, we can, uh, we can try to do something with it, or we can advertise it, or we can sell it. They could profit off it very easily.
Can, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Cause everybody already knows where I'm at.
That's just my opinion, I don't know, I won't be.
I can't, I wouldn't be able to stand aside and carry it down, so everybody already knows where I'm at with that. But I do have the question, because we did spend a lot of time, where are we at with the inspection part of it? What, what was the plan, what, where did that go? Where we were waiting for funding? We were waiting for funding? So we, so we ran out of time?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I appreciate all the conversation that we've had up until this point, I also appreciate that they wanna answer all the well points we made. I mean, the condition of the building, taking on all those things, we could go on and on and on and on of the why. I just don't have the heart, heart in me to tear down a building old in Kiwan. So I'm gonna, no matter what you guys talk about, I'm gonna vote no. So, I'll be transparent now, there's no twisting my heart.
Yes.
I'm a yes to you, dude.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'd like to see plans and how much we're gonna actually be on the hook for updating that building. As much as I wanna keep it, I also know what old buildings cost. And if the city's responsible for that, where are we gonna get that funding? That's where I'm at, I, I know.
Maybe we sell with it. We're not responsible for that, they make profit on it.
I just don't think you can have somebody come in town and pick that up, and then have them buy it, and it's gonna turn into another blight issue.
No, it's a problem, no, it is.
If we don't take it, because that's the thing, is that look at our other two buildings in town, they've sat there for how many years, with garbage in them? And we can't do anything about it? I just think it's a big risk, I mean, if it gets put up for sale and we don't take it, then they may as well tear it down. We can't have any more junk in this town. We can't have any more junk in this town.
Sorry about that.
Mayor, I got some, I have a few comments.
Okay.
So if this building is saleable, why isn't Spire selling it on their own? If we say we don't want it, are they gonna sell it? Or have they tried to sell it?
Or they're gonna tear it down.
Okay.
Can I just add something to that, cause years ago they had said that they would give us first dibs on it, so that doesn't mean that they wouldn't.
Okay. Okay, so.
The agreement is to sell it to us for one dollar.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so in the interim here, I know they wanna know what we wanna do, I'm not, I don't wanna see it come down either, I think it can be utilized for something. I've suggested daycare, people are looking for buildings, there's so much money out there from federal, state, I triple R on daycares. For, you know, fixing up buildings and things like that, I'm sure Ellie probably can speak to that. But, um, I guess if we buy it, we lose tax revenue.
Right.
So we're not gonna get any money from that.
That's why they wanna get rid of it, because they're paying the tax revenue.
The second thing is, well, and we won't get any either, so we're exempt. We don't pay tax, so cities don't pay tax. Secondly, um, we haven't had an assessment done, we don't know, you know, the roof, the heating system, whatever. We're gonna have to maintain the building at what cost? I agree with Tanya, where are we getting the money? We're budget tight right now. We don't have money to put into the building to pay the heat bills. We asked for that information, I have not seen that yet. You know, what, what was the cost of the utilities and the gas and? Did they give us that?
Yeah, yep, it was in the back.
Okay. Um, sorry, I don't recall. Um, yeah, so I don't know, just, I'd rather if we said, try and sell it and come back to us in six months if you don't. I don't know, or three months, or?
If we put it up for sale, Colin, can we get some Jews who we sell to? Or there's some by the law, if we put it up for sale, anybody comes up we have to sell to?
Yeah, I think you've got, you've got some, you're not looking quite at party where you can be just completely discretionary when you're a city. Right, you've gotta put everything out in the level playing field and typically the dollar amount just to the thing that you, um, put it out against really well things up to bid. And you could put some specifications on that as long as it was fair and laid out, it had a fund maybe if you put it out as a public offering. But you aren't able to just say we're gonna go with these people because I know they have a good reputation, they're good at that.
That's what I'm trying.
You have a little bit, you have, once you put it out there for the public, you gotta be there and you can't. If you don't have it laid out, this is what we are looking for in a purchaser, then you're kind of usually stuck.
I've already had people tell me they want five for the dollar. You know, cause they heard that we're giving for a dollar.
So here's another thing, cause I hear, there isn't something I don't disagree about, do you disagree with at this point in time? What if we A, ask for an extension? B, buy it for a dollar and do some of these things that we said that we were gonna do, cause I triple R P also said they didn't wanna see us tear it down.
No, they won't.
And if we have to, I realize that the cost would be that we'd have to tear it down, but I can go back to that whole thing of I don't care who wants to buy it. By history, when people buy our buildings in Keweenaw and they take up spots and they create problems, we've seen it with every single old business that's in town. Every single one. If you go down the blocks, so we can't risk that anymore, it's looking too nice, starting to look nice downtown, we can't be everywhere down there. So. I mean, cause we, we didn't get to do all the stuff that we wanted to do. They need to get rid of it tomorrow.
I can tell you it has a new roof on it, okay? This is what I found out, like you have to do a little investigating on there. It has a new boiler, it has a new air conditioning system, it has new windows. Okay, that's a pretty good start to a building.
Yeah.
Those are the expensive things. And that's what, you know, they got a grant for the windows, they didn't put it in the top line windows, but they're sufficient. The boiler died on them one month before they shut it down, twenty-five thousand dollars and then put the boiler. Okay, so that's brand new. They put a air conditioning system in, I think the year before, one of those that has a thing inside that we got at the office in there. Put in one of those in there. The roof was done by Ray Cornis, uh, I don't know, maybe two years ago when Spire first took it over. So there's been someone who put it there, just you know, I don't think it makes any difference, I just wanted to throw that out there. But yeah, they, the problem with Spire, they're not gonna hold, hold on to it for us much longer because they have to pay tax on it. And they're gonna be paying mega taxes across the street on a three to four million dollar building. It was tall and costing a fortune, so. Which is beneficial to us.
I mean, if the city takes it, what are we gonna do with it?
I have no idea.
What's the plan?
We're gonna conclude.
Well, I'd like to know what the plan is.
Library number two. Or do we do a daycare?
Well, and I know there is someone that is interested in starting a daycare, but, um, I guess I'd rather not be the, the, uh, in between. I'd rather them just go right to Spire and say, how much you wanna sell your building for, than. I mean, there's living capabilities upstairs, I don't know what the int, you know, what does the interior of the building look like? Did anybody go on tour?
Yeah, I've been.
I did. Is it still in?
It needs work.
It needs work.
So, I don't know. I just don't feel like we need, we have buildings that are falling down, we can't even take care of our own buildings and now we're gonna buy another building. There's a list here that I'd like to get updated on city buildings and where we're at, because I think there's quite a few that we haven't taken care of yet, so. I don't know.
So is it, so I'm gonna go back to my, and like I said, I, what is Spire gonna sell it to some, did they, did they say anything about what they're planning to sell it for? Cause I have, I.
No, they, they never said to me that they're gonna sell it.
Okay.
All they ever said to me was, we need to get moving on this because, uh, well, they're taxed, you know, they got a big tax on it. Okay, no, Colin, I don't know what it's gonna be.
Well, wouldn't they have the option?
If they, if they pay part of the taxes, they hold it for us for a while, I don't know.
If, well, and they can go five years without paying taxes, so what's the difference?
Oh, that's right.
So. Yeah. They can go five years.
Can you just ask for an extension just for the next maybe?
What about?
I have a good friend of mine, I'll call him and talk to him.
So if they were to try and sell the building, they have the option to pick and choose. We don't.
Yeah.
So maybe they can put it up for sale, see what happens and come back in a month or two and let us know if they've had any bites or anyone interested.
They don't give an E D that could help them at all, I mean, that might be another option, right?
I don't know, we kinda have an E D.
Okay, yeah, I don't know.
We used to.
Mm-hmm.
Connie, aren't you on there?
Yep. Just so we know.
Um, and what about, you know, like Sarah Carling, contacting her, are there any people looking for a building that wants to start a business or?
She'll be with us.
She'll be here for me, that's a good question.
I'm just putting it out there, but if we put it out there, the first one that comes and says they want it, are we liable to have to sell it to them?
What's the question? I think if it's their building and you're just reporting people to them, it's still a private sale.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, yeah. So I, I'm not in favor of making the decision on whether we keep it or not tonight.
We do that.
I think they need to do some.
I'll modify, guide, invite Pat McCann to our next meeting.
Well, how about if we talk with, you guys talk with Carling on Friday and see if there's any interest and then you can go back to them and let them know. And also let them know that we'd be interested, we'd like them to market the building before we make a decision and see if anybody's interested.
That would be beneficial for us to get some other business in here down town.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Right.
For a tax basis.
Yes.
Right.
What's Sarah's recommendation was to have it looked at to see what it was worth.
Right.
Cause that has the starting point, cause you don't even know what you have until that's done.
Yeah. And I mean, there's lots of, you know, there's BRR grants, there's, um, all kinds of grants out there for, um, if they need interior or exterior, you know.
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficient stuff or lighting and, so if there is a business that's interested, there's grants and things like that available, so. If the I triple R B is serious about this, how come they can't give us the money for this inspection?
I don't think we got.
No.
Not for inspection.
Well, where was the money coming?
Blended.
Blended.
Oh, blended. Well, maybe we need to contact I triple R and ask them if they'd like to pay for that.
We can do that.
So we can get that done anyway and then. I don't know.
Yeah, I can call.
Did Eda Rukabina look at the building at all when she was here?
Yeah, yeah, she didn't wanna come down at all.
Okay.
So, and she was more than willing to offer help, so.
Well, then I guess we need to.
That's why she probably wouldn't right now.
We should probably get ahold of her.
Well, there might be some kind of hoops that we gotta go through to get money for it.
Yeah.
That's, um, number one, you probably have to own the building for them to give us money for the building. That's what I'm thinking, that's one of the hoops. Cause they're not gonna put money in it.
Well, they're not gonna put money.
Spire owns it.
No, they, we can always be the, um, fiscal agent.
Okay.
Just like we did with the credit union, we were the fiscal agent when I triple R B got the money. We didn't own it, we've got the money for them. So.
There's options.
So we can be the fiscal agent to get the funding for the inspection.
I don't wanna be pulled on that.
So Mayor Labine, are you giving directives?
I'll contact, uh, I'll get Pat McCann a call and I'll talk to him and see what options he might have for us. And I'll also talk to Chris at D B R. Try to get something moving with him.
Sounds good.
Go. Okay, do I, we need a motion for me to move forward with that discussion or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll have the mayor to contact. I triple R and Pat McCann to discuss the bank building. The Spire Credit Union building.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
New business. Uh, discuss Eric Sunco's street supervisor application to test for W W D P S D license. Which we pretty much already discussed.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll move on. Ninety-two, approved travel request for Donette.
Can you let him know? We should actually approve the judges before we approve their travel.
Can you go to ninety-two point two?
Okay, we approve judges. Uh, Donette Christie, Jennifer Woodman, Tara Carnes, Ash Prevek, Johnny Forrest, Caroline Dar as the next judges for the twenty-twenty-four election.
I'll support for discussion.
Any further discussion?
Yes, who, who is going to be the head judge?
I'm having two trained in case one is ill.
Okay.
And they are Donette and Jennifer.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Sounds good, you're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Get back to ninety-two one, approved travel request for Donette Christie, Jennifer Woodman, Tara Carnes, Ash Prevek, Johnny Forrest, Caroline Dar. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, nine point three, adopt resolution to hire defense hotline. Is the other one still on there?
Oh, I'm gonna, Reagan didn't drop off her application. Um, so I would ask that that one be removed. She's just missing it.
Okay, adopt resolution.
Well, can we hire her contingent upon submitting the application?
Can, can they do that, Colleen? If she?
Because if she does submit it, she can get into the training, which is on the third.
You might wanna put a deadline on it, so she asks them all the time to submit.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the contingency of Reagan Paul submitting her application by, um, May thirtieth.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want for defense?
That's all in. I'm sorry, I didn't need that part.
Ninety-four one, approved memorandum of understanding between the city of Keweenaw and Ash.
In your council, in your amended agenda, you have a copy of that memorandum? Council have any questions?
I have, I have a few, but I think they're easy ones.
Okay.
So this is, I'm gonna just read first before I. So they haven't signed this yet. Is it, what, what, what's this process, Beth, what, what is happening?
The process is, um, the city is doing an M O U to inform the union that we're hiring a casual labor to strictly mow lawns.
Okay, so do they have to agree with it before then we move to the next agenda item today?
Colleen, is my understanding that we don't, we send them the M O U?
I thought that was a discussion already.
There was, with Brian.
We talked to them, I believe. It was a matter of putting it in the, my understanding was. So we're okay with that? I believe from talking to Brian, we're listening to dispute about it, I don't know if they have seen the actual document.
That's what this is.
So I think if you approve it, we'd submit to them if they have any challenges with the way the M O U is written, then they would go back to Ryan on that.
Yeah, and that's just the clarification, I'm only seeking clarification only because I would hate to move on to the next part if they fuck this at all. If there's no thought that they're going to, then.
I don't think it really matters.
We don't know that.
I think we can hire, we have management.
Every single city on a high range has kids mowing grass and all.
And so.
I get, I get all of that lore, I, I, I'm not in disagreement with all the things that we've talked about up until this point, how we don't have hourly pay. I just simply wanna be respectful of the union pieces and then not, cause I'm not willing to step in hot water and spend multiple extra meetings hashing it out later. So I wanna know if there's gonna be any backlash with this or do we wanna wait for a signed agreement before we start going and hiring people to mow lawn? I have a concern about jumping the gun without a signed document. That's just, I'm not saying I disagree with it, I, I love the way it's written, I just have concerns about that.
One option you could look at is, um, perhaps, um, to address those issues would be to say that before the next meeting, if the signed M O U comes back, that you can make the hire. You have a threshold upon that. Yeah, why else?
We can't, he needs training on June second or third, June third, we don't have the option. So. I'll make a motion to adopt the M O U with the, between the city and the union regarding casual labor and mowing.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Roll call. Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Jivery?
Yes.
Mayor Labine?
Yes.
Counselor Labine?
Yes.
Counselor Throson?
Ma'am. And with discussion, I would like to say, because in the union contract on ten point two under general provisions, it says that we aren't supposed to be doing what we're doing right now. And that's where I have the issue with it.
And where's the contract?
It's at ten point two in the general provisions. And it says that there shall be no replacement of regular employees by relief workers, um, and that they can't be placed in classified positions.
All right, can I?
Are we replacing?
I'd like to ask a question on that, when, uh, all our street department people were gone and Mike Jukic was running our street department? Did you bring that up then?
He was running the street department.
Yeah, the only one here, a casual labor.
I didn't know that even.
Well. I knew it and I see that, that happened. So, I mean, we're not doing this to take anybody's job, everybody has a job to do.
That's why I'm confused as.
Our street department is so far behind on work that we can't have our street department guys putting out and mowing grass when our streets aren't done yet, our alleys aren't done yet. Jobs everywhere, that, that's the purpose of this.
We need to hire someone. And we're gonna pay someone thirty-five dollars an hour to mow lawn because they don't wanna hire a casual labor at eighteen. And we're gonna pay someone thirty-five dollars an hour to mow lawn because they don't wanna hire a casual labor at eighteen. I still say we have management rights. If we wanna hire a casual labor, we can to mow lawn or do whatever. And I agree with the mayor. We have other people that have been hired as casual labors and working down at the shop, which cleaning all winter long, when we said once that casual labor is done and those shifts are up, you're not getting anymore because we don't get that many people that wanna work.
Well, you might have said that, but we didn't agree on that as a public council. That's what we were.
I, it's my opinion and I stated it, so.
But we agreed, no, we all didn't agree. That's all I'm saying.
So here's the point that I.
It's a voting thing. It's all of it.
So, but I think this has to stay at a healthy discussion. It really doesn't need to go down a road like that. The only part, and maybe Susan, you're on, I don't know.
Then we need to have counselors that don't interpret things and cause issues for this to go down the road.
So with it to stay on track, I understand what everybody is saying as far as I'm in a hundred percent agreement with that the city, the street department needs assistance. Because they do, they have way too much work. I, I'm in agreement with that. I'm in agreement with not paying somebody thirty plus dollars an hour to mow lawn. Um, we talked about that last time during our work session, you know? My only concern right now, and I really have no investment in who it does or does not get hired, as long as they can do the job that they're doing. I don't care about any of the garbage in between. I just wanna see a signed contract so that we can move forward with what we just discussed. I don't care about all the extra stuff.
Mayor, did we already vote on this?
Uh, one more thing I wanna bring up. You can't just pick and choose what you want your casual labor for, Chris, and that's what's happening.
And that's what I need.
You can't just pick and choose it. We need somebody on the lawnmower. Let's hire somebody and put them on there. He's no different than the casual labors that we've been hiring all winter long. That's all I'm saying. When I was boss, I hired lawnmower people every single year.
Yeah.
When, when my guys didn't have nothing to do, then that person went home and then they mowed their grass, okay? We don't have that. We got jobs all over that entity now.
And I realize.
That's my point.
I realize.
I'm a union person all the way. I'm not screwing nobody over. This is nothing but crying, what's going on here. They got in trouble making, that's all it is, so.
Well, and that's the thing.
Take it any way you want.
I'm just, like I said, I'm releasing my, my opinion about it.
Mayor Labine, so you have passed the?
We had a motion.
Okay, so.
So you remember.
Okay. So you're to nine point four dash two.
I'll make a motion to hire Mike Sizik as casual labor to mow lawns, grass.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Roll call. Counselor Maris?
Yes.
Counselor Jivery?
Yes.
Mayor Labine?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Labine, I skipped you. I'm sorry. That's all right. Yes, okay. Motion carry.
All right, nine point five, adopt a resolution to amend community infrastructure grant for the regional wastewater sewer connection.
Mayor Labine, if I may, um, this is permission for you to direct me to ask the I triple R B if we can use the remaining funds of that original hundred and eighty thousand to be used in the decommissioning.
Seventy thousand left.
Yes. If the twenty thousand retainer fee would be taken out of that seventy though.
Oh, okay, possibly. Yeah, okay, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to send an amending resolution to I triple R regarding the community infrastructure grant for the wastewater sewer connection.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Nine point six, review quote for city stage from advanced awning signs. For nine thousand one thousand two, and we've had that up to six thousand in some.
You have another bid, which Eric just got for us, and I included it in the, so there's two. There's one in your packet and then there's one that he just received that was added to the amended agenda. And the second one is for six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
My take on this is, we don't have the money to buy it. So I think we have to gamble, you know?
Can we consider it for next year and because I know the fourth of, it's new symbols for the Fourth of July and maybe sandwich it with that or raising money for Fourth of July stuff and pay for it that way? Is that possible?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So on these quotes, okay, so the first one is seventy-two nineteen, but they're installing it. I'm not sure what that entails, if that's, if the street department, street department can install the new awning or not. The other quote is sixty-five thirty. Um, it's not installed. It says by City Kewaton. Looks like they're, are they both remote control? No, this one has a manual crank. And the cheaper one has a remote control. Um, so anyway, I guess um, the cheaper one is probably the one we're gonna have to go with if we decide to do it. But my suggestion is um.
I thought we were just buying the canvas.
I don't know.
This bid is like we're buying the whole thing. Awning retractable.
Yeah, they both are.
We're not just buying Blaze, we're buying the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, they're both retractable awnings, yeah.
I thought.
So first of all, my question is, who's opened the awning to look at it to see if we need it replaced?
I see it was bad.
It's bad? Okay.
It was bad last year.
Okay. Is it getting rotted? Okay. Second of all, another suggestion I had was um, possibly Blaze is looking for some advertising of some sort or Misabi metallics. Maybe they'd like to donate money and have their name put on the banner. I don't know. Or give some support to, you know.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's an option. If they'd like to sponsor out the banner for the Fourth of July stage.
You just said that they wanna.
They wanna do some type of.
And that suits for all of the big events and all.
Mm-hmm.
What, what are you saying? The awning that come out would have to have their logo on it or something?
Yeah, whatever, yeah. I mean, is there, yeah, something like that.
Well.
I guess you'd have to contact a company to see.
Cost to have that, their logo and stuff put on the site, a piece of canvas.
Or if anybody around does that separately, I don't know. It's just a suggestion. I'm sure you can do it. You can get tents and awnings with people's um.
Treasure Bay does it?
Treasure Bay does it, okay. I mean, it can't hurt.
Mayor, just talk to one that's a piece.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. I'll direct the, I'll make a motion to direct the city clerk to send an email to Blaze Credit Union regarding purchasing the awning for the Fourth of July trailer with their logo and donation.
I'm supporting.
Are you?
Do you need to go outside a second?
No.
I'll second it.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, approve attorney to draft letter to us regarding employee change of job classification.
Make a motion. This is discussed in the work session.
Yeah.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried. Discuss Officer Whitney's solar camera quotes for O'Brien reservoir.
Mayor Labine?
Yes.
Officer Whitney had a previous engagement, so he's not able to come here. But what he did find out is, and what he needs approval for, if the council um, agrees, he would need internet out at the O'Brien reservoir in order to have the cameras. So he's asking that, and that's included in your packet, that the council approve that monthly charge for a hotspot for internet out there. And then if the council would so approve him to find cameras for up to, like we did with the flowers for Counselor Thompson, up to four hundred dollars. And then he'll try and find the best deal and come back to you at the next uh, council meeting.
Does he know where he's gonna place them?
Yeah.
He asked me again.
On, well, on our new building, of course.
Right, well.
Nobody's option, probably by the pavilion.
Okay.
He did discuss it with you.
Okay.
So just a motion for the hotspot right now?
Yeah, that's all we need.
And then up, that he can spend up to, if that's okay with you guys.
And then he'll have to go out and find cameras.
Mm-hmm.
So can I make a motion to approve everything that he wrote in the letter? On five, six seconds.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any Fourth of July meeting update?
Uh, yep, we got, uh, our next meeting's June seventeenth at five o'clock and I think that was a Monday. Um, I think we got everything scheduled and all lined up. We got lots of activities going and anybody that wants to volunteer. We're always taking volunteers. Sell your raffle tickets, buy your raffle tickets.
Flyers at the printers.
Flyers are at the printers, those are getting done.
We have some new things that are gonna be fun this year.
New games. We're having a treasure hunt for, a medallion hunt uh, for a kayak and a paddle as the grand prize winner would get that. Um, so that's new. We have a frozen T-shirt contest game sponsored by Blaze. Um, so that'll be interesting.
We have some new music coming on.
Yep, new music. Um, Total Revival, of course, will be on the fourth and then the fifth is Donkey Swamp. Swamp donkeys or something. So that's a new one. And then um, the acoustic music at the um, main drive during the day on Friday. Um, yeah, lots of things happening. So beanbag tournament and.
I'll go.
Yeah. Yeah. And it won't be a late night on Thursday, ten o'clock, the band is done, so. Friday, the street Johnson fireworks too, so. Yep. That's all I got on that.
Uh, Department head report.
Mayor, can I give a update on the Kewaton cleanup days, please? Did you um, so we had the cleanup days this last weekend, May seventeenth and eighteen. Um, I have to say, Kewaton produced garbage. So the last couple of years, we had all that grant and that funding and whatnot, and so we were able to really throw something together. This year, um, regret, regretfully, I decided to man the dumpsters with Officer Whitney. And we had our butts handed to us on Sunday. Um, so I do have to, uh, Chief Whitney was a, my partner in crime for the thing, but I'd also have to give a show note. Uh, so Waste Management had donated four dumpsters to the City of Kewaton for our cleanup days. And I thought that was gonna be good enough. And by the first date on Friday, we were full. So we had to call General Waste for support and they came at four thirty on Friday and delivered us two more dumpsters free of charge. Um, they didn't have to, and they did. So I was super grateful for that. We ended up not having to turn anybody away. We were able to get everything done. Um, thank, thankfully to the uh, uh, Supervisor Sunquist for coming and smashing down the dumpsters with the loader. Because if he wouldn't have done that, we would have been in big trouble. So it was, it's been really, really fun. Um, like I said, lots and lots of garbage. And I think we learned this year that people in Kewaton are still wanting to roll with the way we've done it the last couple of years. So this next year, we'll be prepared again for offering everything we had before, when we had the funding. So it's good. The only, the only thing left on the agenda, so everybody came and got their stuff, the only thing left is that Bass Brook Recycling has to come and get the scrap. Um, that's over in the, the way. But we had no issues. Everybody followed the rules. Everybody was just awesome. So it was, it was a good turnout for Kewaton. That's it. And then Chief Whitney about some of his other stuff.
Thank you very much for giving it to the city. Appreciate it.
That's special.
I know, but you're, you're usually.
Next year I'll be back.
You're back.
Yeah, I'll be back. Uh, I'd like to bring up something. Uh, we're gonna have a street project started here in town, uh, right after Memorial Day on North Coast Street. And it will be fully funded by grants by this council. We're getting rumors up to see how that key tag is paying for this whole job. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure. Great people all, let me see them. It's two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We did get a grant from I triple R B to do the project. And it isn't in the paper because it's been like from two years ago. It's not something that I just got the money yesterday. We've been getting added to it. But it came from probably twenty twenty-two, so. We're working hard.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had one thing. If um, the clerk could contact Eric Sunquist, Street Supervisor, and ask him for a um, updated building repair list. I know some of the stuff is done, so maybe if he can just go through and remove what's done and give us the new list, that'd be good. Before the, for that, the next meeting.
Very good. Um, Counselor Thompson, do you wanna give an update on the zoning meeting we just had?
Um, it was a good meeting. We introduced the um, new members that had come on board. Asked them to take a ride around town. It was a quick meeting. Um, Beth handed out books to the two new members. Um, made our chair person Randy now. Um, other than that, it went well.
Very good.
We gotta get our, motion to, closing meeting.
My most.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need to close.